All right, well, let's get going with tonight's meeting. I'd like to call to order the city council, Soddy City Council meeting for January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Becken?
Here. So, all in attendance, first order of business is a approval of the city council regular council meeting minutes from December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
I move we, I move we approve the Sagatuck City Council minutes from December twenty-eighth at seven o'clock as presented.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Peterson, seconded by Dean to approve the minutes. Are there any comments or questions? If none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton? Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, mayor comments. For those college football fans and those who aren't college football fans, a proud Sagatuck moment will take, Sagatuck Indian moment will occur this evening. The national championship game between University of Alabama and Ohio State will feature on the sidelines a former Sagatuck high school Indian, former Soddy resident Butch Jones, who was one of the assistant coaches for the Alabama Crimson Tide. So, keep an eye out for Butch. After this game is completed, Butch will take on the head coaching job at Arkansas State University. So, roll tide.
Yeah, he's on the right side tonight.
All right, city manager's comments, Karen?
Good evening. I've got a few. First off, under communications, you'll find that there's a bequest from the Arnold Schaefer Trust. I never know where to put these things because there's no action to take. So, I put it under communications, but I wanted to bring that up into Cindy manager's comments. I did a little bit of research about Mr. Schaefer, and I didn't want it to be at the end of the meeting, so I'm gonna talk about him right now. Mr. Schaefer was born in nineteen thirty-one. He graduated from Miami of Ohio. He was drafted into the Navy during the Korean War. He served aboard the destroyer USS Gatling. Gatling protected aircraft carriers from enemy submarines. After his service in the Navy, he settled in Chicago. He was a mechanical engineer. He worked in sales for the U.S. Railway. He also studied architecture, and he refurbished several old, small apartment buildings, which were originally built for the eighteen ninety-three Chicago World's Fair. Mr. Schaefer and his late wife Gretchen came to Sagatuck one Thanksgiving, and they thought the downtown looked like a movie set. Before you know it, they bought a little cottage on Elizabeth Street, which Mr. Schaefer restored. And in two thousand, he bought a historic eighteen fifty-seven three-bay barn in Douglas, which he transformed into his home. Both the cottage in Sagatuck and the barn in Douglas have been on the Historical Society's walking tours. Mr. Schaefer was a gifted woodworker. In addition to restoring old structures, he crafted beautiful works of art. Some he gave away to friends, and some of his work is on display at the Sagatuck Douglas Historical Society Museum. The picture you have there is from the Historical Society's two thousand and nine summertime exhibit. He built a one-eighth scale replica of the big pavilion. He had never seen the pavilion in person. He, he did it from pictures. You'll notice the seven arches making up the roof. They were built from match, matchsticks glued one at a time. Arnold Schaefer died last summer in July. He was eighty-three years of age. He survived by his partner of seventeen years, Rosemary Nielsen, and her family. The successor trustee of the state, Julie Kohler of Sagatuck, said that she thought Ernie would be pleased at the immediate impact his gift will have in treating the Mill Foil problem in the harbor. So, I wanted everyone to know what kind of a man leaves ten thousand dollars to the city, and he was quite a guy from my research. A couple other things I have is, I told you two weeks ago that the DPW would be grinding sidewalks. They, they rent a machine. They got the machine, started it up, and it was leaking hydraulic fluid, so it went right back to their rental place. So, they picked it up again today, and the darn thing's broke, so they took it back again. So, we still haven't started the grinding of the sidewalks, but it'll, it'll get done before, before the tourists arrive for sure, hopefully next week. The other thing is, Mr. Herbert, Scott Herbert, had DPW interviews. We have an opening there. Interviewed five people this morning, had some very, very good candidates. So, there, there's a couple outstanding that he will have to choose from, and so pretty soon we'll, we'll be back to a full crew. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Karen. In, in a follow-up to Karen's comments regarding the Arnold Schaefer bequest for the community and for council, Friday, we signed the acceptance form, authorizing the actual acceptance of the ten thousand dollar gift. And we sent out a thank you note to Julie Kohler on behalf of the council and the city, thanking the family for the, for the donation and the request to the city. Moving on, agenda changes. Karen, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
We did send out an email. These new business short-term rental fees. What you had was not complete, and I apologize for that. So, we did send out an email to council that, of a policy, and it's up to council if you want to, you know, take more time to, to look at it, or if you want to discuss it tonight. Again, apologize for the short, short notice of that.
Okay.
Nothing new on the agenda.
That's just an addendum to an existing agenda item.
Correct.
And I believe that's gonna be available to show on the screen, and I think Cindy will kind of take the lead on that when that, that topic comes up.
Yes.
Any other agenda changes from council? If none, the agenda will stand as presented. Next order of business, our guest speakers. We have two of them this evening. First on the docket is Lieutenant Brett Enfield from Allegan County Sheriff's Department. Brett, are you out there?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I suspect he may have dropped. There was someone who called in and has dropped off.
There's someone calling in now?
Not that I see.
All right.
But you might start with perhaps Gregory.
All right. Okay. There he is.
Sorry.
Yep. Okay, Brett, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. I, I hit the star six, but I still have my phone on mute, so at least I know, at least I know that works now. Just a couple of things, yeah, the New Year's Eve evening was uneventful. Did not have any issues or anything like that. Actually, we had sent the reserves that we had called in home early. Also, I sent in the quarterly stats from October to the end of December to you guys. And also, with that, this, in December, the four deputies made fifty-four traffic stops and issued forty-five citations. So far, we're still, with your officers, we're still good with COVID and stuff. Kind of steering clear. As the sheriff's department as whole, we're kind of, you know, one person, and then they're out for a couple of weeks, and then so we're kind of playing that game and stuff with scheduling still, so but it's not as bad as what it could be, I guess. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Counsel, any questions for lieutenant? Okay, if none, Brett, thanks as always for showing up this evening and giving us the report. And we appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. I'll have to watch the football game tonight, so.
There you go.
Yep.
Next order of, the next guest speaker, Greg Muncie from Sedaba. Greg? Need on mute yourself, Greg, please.
There we go.
Okay.
Thanks for giving me the time, you guys. I'll try to make it quick. I know there's a football game. I don't even ice skate, so I'm not really into football. But I just wanted to thank you for having me here, and I want, just want to share a few of the accomplishments and plans for Sedaba this year. And I appreciate the relationship I've had with all you guys over the years, and I wanted to also, again, congratulate Scott and Lauren for your new seats there, and look forward to working with you guys. I appreciate the time that you spent with me before the election. You helped make my vote in the voting booth a lot easier, so I hope you guys wish you the best of luck. I wanted to let you know about a few of the projects and that, that we've just released just recently. I've got four things to bring up, and, and you can ask any questions or whatever if you'd like after these four things. So, the first one, real quick, the Our Town Sedaba Bucks Promotion. You may have heard about that, but it was the Sedaba Board in conjunction with Consumers Energy is excited to launch our, our Town Sedaba Bucks Program. Consumers Energy is helping out community members, small businesses, and their employees throughout Michigan by providing, providing dollar-for-dollar match gift cards, certificates that are purchased through chambers, business associations throughout the state. The Our Town Sedaba Bucks Promotion will double the amount shoppers can spend at Sedaba businesses. For example, if they buy fifty dollars worth, we give them a hundred dollars from our wonderful brand, Consumers Energy. A total of over twenty thousand dollars worth of Sedaba bucks have been sold in just the last month, and that means direct business to the door of our Sedaba businesses. All Sedaba bucks purchased through this program will expire at the end of this year to encourage our consumers to use them right up when our businesses need the help right now. They have already sold out, and we are busy distributing them this week. There was a three hundred dollar purchase limit as to spread the wealth, and they are equipped with security features such as a watermark, tracking numbers, so that our treasurer will be able to track where they, where they were spent and who spent them where. So, here's an idea of what one looks like. And we'll be distributing through town. We've got through signs already at the Butler Restaurant and other businesses. The Buck stops here. I've got a more permanent one coming out this week, but I printed some up real quick on my printer just to have members have them throughout Sagatuck and Douglas Sedaba members as well, of course. You may be, already be familiar with Sedaba bucks, using just like cash, and they encourage shopping in our local communities. We usually sell a couple thousand dollars of them every year, not a whole lot. It's not a big program, but I know with this program, I know that they're going to increase selling already, because we're already starting to sell them at face value now that we've already sold out. They come in dollar amounts of ten dollars and twenty-five dollars, and customers can present them at all Sedaba members just like cash. It's a great program. All of the business owners, I've been visiting with them, whether on the phone while I couldn't visit with them or in person the last few weeks, are super excited about this. I'd also, and if, if you guys have any questions about the program, anybody?
Counsel, anyone?
About Sedaba bucks or, okay. Then our second one I'd like to bring up second is a Sedaba Sparkle Ornament, twenty twenty-one. This is the twenty-eighth year that Sedaba has worked local artists and the high school art department to create an ornament helping to fund holiday lighting and activities. Available by Memorial Day weekend for ten dollars at area retailers or by contacting Sedaba. Past ornaments, we've done different icons, art, and buildings throughout the area. A hundredth year of OXPO. I've got a huge collection here. I know I've shared with several of you. The Sagatuck Drugstore, the Butler Pantry are a couple stores that really sell a lot of them. They're available to all Sedaba members if they want to sell them in their stores as well. Now, it would have been the not twenty-ninth year, however, due to the late opening of the manufacturer and budget concerns for two thousand twenty, Sedaba Board elected not to create the traditional Sparkle Ornament last year. This year, David Langley of Serendipity Bed and Breakfast and Daniel Hannah, the art teacher at Sagatuck High School, along with her art students collaborated to create an ornament that will reflect both twenty and twenty-one. It'll say both two thousand twenty-one on it, because we have folks that have collected these over the years, and they look forward to getting their new one. This year's subject for the art department was the Sagatuck Center for the Arts, and the final design features the Sculpture Kickstart by artist Kevin Barrett located on the grounds of the SCA. The sculpture was donated by Daniel DeGraff, co-owner of Armstrong DeGraff Art Gallery on Main Street here in Sagatuck, and the late RJ Peterson. It was installed in two thousand six as a memorial to commemorate the five-year anniversary of nine eleven. The winning design was created last fall by art student Alexis Warren, who will be rewarded with a hundred dollar Sedaba bucks, and she will also be credited in press releases, e-glass, and social media. The Sparkle Fund is separate from Sedaba's budget fund and is used for Christmas activities, events, and for donations to the city for downtown lights. Sedaba has used this fund for our many donations to the city of Sagatuck for holiday lights over the years. Our most recent donation was three thousand dollars for the purchase of the new Christmas tree light structure in two thousand eighteen, built by Sean Steele. And we are excited to bring this program back as to kickstart a better year. And the pun was totally intended there. So, I encourage you guys to buy one. They'll be going into production soon. Music in the park and Sedaba events. You know, we've been talking about events. They've been on our agenda the last few months, so the board wanted to get you updated that the board facilitates, Sedaba facilitates many events in Sagatuck, including music in the park, annual sidewalk sale, art in the park, and now glow in the park, just to name a few. Now, this is a total of about twenty events collectively that bring thousands and thousands of folks to our town, so of course, that's a concern. COVID during two thousand twenty canceled all of our events, and I received countless emails and phone calls by disappointed but understanding locals and visitors, many who plan their vacations around these events. This year, the Sedaba Board has approved the event schedule for two thousand twenty-one, but with much caution. And of course, the events are contingent on laws health departments, and we welcome your input too. The, as we move forward, the safety of our community and visitors is our priority, of course, and we are willing to take extra steps to ensure a safe environment and a fun time for all. Taking tips from observing how Sagatuck Center for the Arts facilitated its many events this summer, fall, outside their parking lot, we are prepared with effective measures if needed. These measures include limiting audience by using temporary fencing if needed and keeping a head count, creating a grid pattern with washable chalk spray, denoting the spaces with six-foot distances, providing sanitation masks throughout the park, having little sanitation stations around, and making regular announcements to help enforce these measures, and of course, help from the Allegan County Sheriff when needed. Now, while we don't anticipate any problems, we want to be best prepared for any isolated incidents that could occur by those not respecting safety rules. I have friends that work in the same, same job I have in Monroe, Wyandotte, places throughout Michigan, and a few outside the state that I talk to regularly. And so, I'm keeping updated with how things are, how we move safely. I'm constantly on the CDC information page and, and, and making sure that we're gonna have these events safe. So, we just want to make sure that we're really moving forward cautiously, but we are planning on definitely music in the park. I can't tell you where we stand on the St. Patty's Day Parade yet, but I'm sure that'll be a topic of discussion at our next Sedaba Board meeting, which I invite you to come to. That'll be this Wednesday via Zoom. So, just wanted to update you on those things. Finally, real quick, the PPP, there's a third round of that. We let our business owners know that there's, that there's still help out there. They can apply as soon as the thirteenth. That's this Wednesday. There's another two hundred and eighty-four billion dollars going out right now. They, they're catering right now, the first two days that they open the application process to financial institutions first, and then small businesses with less than five hundred employees will be able to apply for that help. Sedaba has alerted all of our business members, and we're willing to help with questions about the application process. So, I just want to update you guys on all those things. And then, Chris Peterson, if I could ask you a question. I've gotten a couple of phone calls about folks asking, how long are the lights gonna stay up on, on Butler? Because they just absolutely love it. I'm, I'm guessing the end of January, but I thought maybe you might answer that for me. Thank you.
I think, I think actually the council decided at our last meeting to keep them up through St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, yay!
Yeah, I've talked.
But we're all happy about that, and I'll be happy to share that. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for giving me your time.
Okay, Greg, does any council member have questions for Greg? If not, thanks, thanks for your report, Greg. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Anytime you guys need to get ahold of me, just call me. I love our one-on-ones, and I love our together and groups on groups, and I love to communicate. So, that's, that's why I've had a great relationship with the many people that have served on this board the last ten years, and I've worked with Sedaba, so thank you.
All right, Greg, you just have to ramp up the enthusiasm a little bit more, would you? Okay, all right. Thanks. Next part of the meeting is for public comment. Where we open the floor for comments from the public. If you wish to address the council, please, please be recognized. State your name and your residence community, and limit your comments to three minutes on agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to address the council this evening?
I don't see anyone. Crickets.
Oh, okay. Thank you. There will be another opportunity to address the council later in the meeting. Next order of business is approval of accounts payable. I have a motion to approve the accounts payable this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I move that we approve the accounts payable for four hundred seventy thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and one cent.
Second.
Okay, I didn't pick up that second. Was it Garnett?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, there's a motion on the floor to approve the accounts payable. I trust her, seconded by Louis. The amount of four hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and one cent. Over three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of that amount is our tax revenue pass-throughs to other communities. Any questions on the accounts payable? If not, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Truster?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Motion is passed unanimously. We have no introduction of ordinance to this evening. There are no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. Move on to our action items this evening. New business. First item to address, master meeting schedule. Karen, you want to say a few words about this, please?
Yes, I'm going to defer to our clerk, Erin Wilkinson. Erin's been working on not only the city council schedule, but all of the committees involved in the city and getting them on a master list and getting it all up on the web. So, I am deferring to Erin to explain this item.
Okay, Erin?
All right, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. Each year, as a result of the Open Meetings Act, we just have to publish a schedule of our meetings. And so, this is the master schedule, which follows the same rules it normally would, which is the second and fourth Monday of each month, we have council meetings, and then the Thursday proceeding, we, at four P.M., we had a workshop. This is also, for anybody who hasn't seen it yet, bear with me as I on our new website, you can also subscribe on the city council page to the calendar, so it will update you of all the meetings, and when we add a special meeting like I just did, it'll notify you that as well. And then, I also created a master schedule, which is a little big for this screen, which just has everyone, every, all of the different committees' schedules in one place.
All right.
Pretty much it.
That's a nice feature. Very nice feature.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve Resolution two one zero one 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 dash A to adopt the regular two thousand twenty-one city council schedule of meetings as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Louis, seconded by Peterson to approve the motion as presented. Any other comments by council or questions? If none, would the clerk, clerk, please call a roll on the motion?
Sure. Just to clarify, was that Stanton on the second? Or Peterson?
Stanton.
Stanton.
It was Stan. Mike.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yep.
Louis?
Thank you.
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster? And Becken?
Yes, a motion passes unanimously. Next order of business, renewal of the street end license agreement rates for two thousand twenty-one. Karen?
This is a item that was on your workshop last Thursday. I am also going to defer to Clerk Wilkinson on this. She's been working on it.
Erin?
Yep, so you covered this pretty extensively, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the education on street end licenses. I learned a lot at the workshop. So, basically, we have just applied what we discussed, which is increasing the rate people are paying by one point one percent, which is calculated by the CPI, Consumer Price Index. And there is an Excel spreadsheet here that was in your packet that has each of the street end license locations, who it's licensed to, and what the rate is, and the total amount. And then, also in the packet is the updated contract, which gets updated for each of the street end licenses to have their particular information in it, and that has already been reviewed by the city attorney. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
I move we approve the two thousand twenty-one municipal license agreement rates as presented on attachment A and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all non-pending agreements for two thousand twenty-one as presented.
Second.
Hey, and that second came from?
Garnet.
Garnett. Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the motion as presented. Counsel, any other questions or comments? If none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Next order of business, fee schedule amendment, short-term rentals. And I think Cindy's going to address counsel on this matter.
I defer to Cindy. She's waiting for me.
Okay, yeah, I thought I called on Cindy, my favorite. So, you there, Cindy?
I'm here now.
All right.
As you know, we have a short-term rental registration requirement that all short-term rentals are to register with the city. We have a handful of people that either do not register at all or do not re-register in a timely fashion when their permits expire. So, based on my experience in Holland, I put together a late fee or what I'm calling investigation fee, where if I have to troll through all the internet websites to find out who's renting without being registered, can be kind of time-consuming, and I have, if I have to send out letter after letter after letter, reminding people to register or re-register. reminding people to register or re-register, it also is time-consuming and takes away from my other activities that I do for the city. It was extremely successful in Holland, and the fees for the township and the city of Douglas are the same as for the city of Sagatuck, and that's intentional. We wanted to make them all be the same. So as not to cause problems between, okay, I'm going to register this one in Sagatuck, and I have to pay 250. I'm going to register this one in Douglas, and it's 450. We kept them all the same purposefully, so that wouldn't be an issue. Because of that, I did reach out to my colleagues in the township and Douglas. And they were extremely enthusiastic about having the same kind of fee schedule there. They also have the exact same problem. Just a handful of people don't want to follow the rules. So we'll give them a little incentive, and I did send you later this afternoon a policy, and that was my fault, not Karen's fault, putting together, listing out how those guidelines for assessing the fees would be addressed. And there's plenty of opportunity in this policy for people to comply and register without any additional fees, starting with a courtesy reminder. And then a formal notice. And then a second formal notice that comes with an invoice. And then a third formal notice that comes with an invoice. And then a sticker will be placed on the main door, and I gave you examples of that at the workshop packet. It doesn't have to have that exact language in it, but it, people, that that is the biggest deterrent, more than the fees. So that's what I'm looking for in this fee schedule amendment.
Okay. Do we want to have a motion and then a discussion, or do, does council have some, some discussion or questions for Cindy?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll make the motion, and we can have our discussion. Motion to approve the change to the city of Sagatuck's schedule fees to allow for investigation fees for those who fail to register or re-register after written notice or notices.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Louis seconded by Leo on the motion to approve, to approve the addition of investigative fees to the Sodak, city of Sagatuck fee schedule. I'll start with questions for Cindy. Do all these licenses renew on the same day each year?
No, they do not. They renew on the anniversary of their first registration date.
Okay, so they're staggered throughout the year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And when they're, when that yellow, if the unfortunate episode occurs that that the yellow sticker is placed on the, the door of the rental unit, does that mean it can't be rented? Or is it just considered?
That's correct. It's unlawful to rent it. You.
So it's a violation.
People break the law every day, but it's lawful.
I just wanted to clarify that. And we are also approving this draft agreement at the same, or draft policy at the same time, or is that pretty much the final poly, as you, policy as you see it?
We can, we can approve it. We can discuss it and table it. It's totally your pleasure. There's not a big rush to get this done. It's been on my desk for quite a while. So I would like to eventually get it finalized and approved.
Okay, all right. Open up to questions by council. Cindy?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
This is Chris. Yeah.
Yes.
Um, when we first started, there was something else that was put in here. I'm not seeing what that was. There was something added that didn't go out in the packet. Did I misunderstand that?
That was the policy that that Karen, that Erin is showing you right now.
Okay.
It has just the excerpt from the ordinance that tells what the ordinance says, and then the guidelines to assess the fee. You first get a courtesy notice, and then you get a first formal notice, and it just lays out the, the instructions. So everybody gets a chance to be treated exactly the same.
Good. And I see at the bottom there is exactly what I was looking for. The court may order the amounts due to be placed on the tax bill, because if they're not paying, and the notices don't bother them, and they're still going to rent it even though that's got the yellow sticker, then that gives us a handle on a penalty to comply. Will the, who put the yellow notices up?
That would be me.
Okay.
And and the court can order the amounts to be placed on the tax bill. There's nothing in the state statute or our ordinance that says they have to do that. But it does have to go through the court process to be placed on the tax bill.
And if they keep not doing it, and they're not in compliance, what?
With a court order, if they're not in compliance with a court order, then they can go to jail or be arrested.
Okay, so is that a pretty easy avenue with the court order?
No. It's the last resort.
Have you had good success? And I, I've heard you say send them out and send them out and send them out. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if we have enough in this proposal to actually make people comply.
I think we will. I don't think that I will ever have to place more than one or two stickers, and the word will be out. And everybody will voluntarily comply with the first courtesy notice. I would guess that of the courtesy notices that I have to send now, about 80% of them reply within 15 days. This would give another opportunity to give another 15 days without extra fees or charges. But the letter would be a lot more explanatory about what will happen if you don't register. It will just be more fleshed out and say, if you don't register, you, we gave you a courtesy notice. You didn't respond. Now we're giving your last warning to comply without any fees or charges. And that's more than ample opportunity to get that done. I'd say we're going to get just about everybody in that second letter if they're, if they know they have a fee, investigation fee of $250 hanging out there. And then they still have opportunity to get that resolved before we get to the last resort, number seven, of going through the court system.
Okay, other, any other comments?
Mayor?
Scott?
Yeah, two quick questions for Cindy. Is this lack of compliance? I mean, do you, do you see it as being intentional or just a lack of understanding of the city's regulations?
I see both, but I have sent out up to five letters to one person and still don't get a response. I consider that intentional.
Okay. And then the second question is, I, I noticed half the fee goes to the fire department. Is this, this fee, does this go to providing some assurance to visitors that these rentals have been inspected for things like fire extinguisher, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors? Is that the intent of the, the revenue?
That's exactly it. It goes to the fire department for their inspection process. Rest is administrative and overhead costs. So I actually spend a fair amount of time on rentals, so I don't need to do all the chasing down of the, the few handful that just ignore me.
So this is designed with time? That's my question.
Designed with, well, I.
This was safe with safety of our visitor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy? Give us information again on the, the actual rental license. The licenses themselves, they're originally for three years.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And they're $250.
For three years.
Period. And that split 50/50 between the city and the fire department, correct?
Yes.
So at the end of the three-year, does, does it turn into another three-year agreement, or are they annual after that?
They are another three-year agreement. At the end of, when the, when the certificate expires, they can apply for another three-year certificate.
And the fee at that time is?
$250 for three years.
Again, okay, with the same split for the same, same rationale.
And they get the same inspection for the renewal. Sometimes fire extinguishers disappear. Sometimes smoke detectors disappear. Sometimes the exit map is lost or misplaced. So it's the same inspection by the fire department to ensure fire safety.
Right, so it can be pretty punitive by the time they tack on these, these fees, these penalty fees on top of the, you know, the, the $250 three-year renewal they have to do. Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris?
This is for Cindy. Refresh my memory. We also tacked on a fee of, I don't know what we tacked on, but if they, if the fire department had to go out and it wasn't in compliance, and they'd have to make a second trip, what did we do about that?
There is a fire department reinspection fee of $60 for their second trip to cover their expenses. It does, I, it, it is kind of confusing to some people that this $250 investigation fee is not the same as the inspection fee that the fire department charges.
Hey, Cindy, at the re.
Clear?
Go ahead, Chris. I'm sorry.
Do you think that needs to be clearer some way?
Well, that kind of leads to my, what I was going to ask about the subsequent renewals. Do we send those out? Is there a, a notice that we sent out at that time that their, their, their license is up for renewal and?
Yes, there are a few very conscientious property owners that pay attention to their expiration dates and send it in without my having to send a courtesy reminder. But I, I always send a courtesy reminder to everybody who has not re-registered, and I do try to get them in advance of their expiration date. This year, it's been behind. I fully admit we are behind in sending out those courtesy notices. But we have to get on top of this and, and keep sending them out.
You think it might be prudent to, when the renewal notice goes out, to also send a notice about this new program?
Definitely, definitely.
Good, good, okay. Yes, Chris?
I'm, I'm sorry, I have one more question. When you, when it's a rental that's in a rental program, are you able to find an easier way to do them all? Do they keep, do the rental agencies themselves that are watching the short terms, do they keep track of that?
There are some that do, and some that I do have to send a notice to.
Might be something we want to look a little bit into harder. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we have any more questions for Cindy?
No.
No? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Yep, was, was, did Holly want to say something?
Oh, I, I was just gonna say.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. I was just gonna say quickly that I had a chance to talk about this with Cindy before COVID at her desk. I think it's a great idea to get the 20% that are non-compliant with, in compliance, and it also saves her time. So I think it's, I'm really glad that she brought it forward, and I support it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Yep. Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Moving on to the next agenda item. The reappointment of compensation, compensation committee members. Erin, you want to fill us in on this one, please?
Or in September of 2017, Compensation Commission was established by ordinance. They, the first three members, the commission is three-member committee, were Peg Sanford, Jim Muir, and William Lint. They met in December of 2017. At that time, they recommended to city council that the per-meeting compensation for council went from $35 to $50 a meeting. The commission has not met since then. They don't meet unless they're asked to meet. The, so the city council in January of 2018, they did accept the commission's recommendation, and the per-meeting fee was raised to $50. That's for a maximum of 24 meetings in a year, which is basically for the regular council meetings. There's no compensation for committee meetings or special meetings or workshops. So anyway, there are three-year appointments. The original three appointees, Peg Sanford, Jim Muir, and William Lint, agreed to serve another three years. If that's approved by council, those terms will expire the end of December in 2023.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to be made?
Sure.
Go ahead, Chris.
Chris?
Okay, a motion to approve Mayor Becken's reappointments of Peg Sanford, Jim Muir, and William Lint to the Compensation Commission Committee for three-year terms expiring December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Peterson, seconded by Truster to approve the motion as presented. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Again, the committee is just, would be asked to review compensation for council members only. All other compensation issues are under the purview of the city manager with the acceptance of the city manager's own compensation. So if there are no further questions, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Next order of business. The aquatic doctors' contract for treatment of Eurasian water milfoil, Kalamazoo Lake. Karen?
Yes, your December 23rd workshop. The Milfoil Advisory Committee presented the report of their committee. I'll back up a little bit. The council created this advisory committee last September. They met several times, listened to experts, did a lot of research. They studied a lot of different methods for treating the Eurasian water milfoil in Kalamazoo Lake and Harbor. And what it came down to was there was only one recommended method of treating, at least in the short term, and that was using herbicide. Long-term, when, when the dense vegetation is less dense, we could have a possibility of doing dash diving, removing it in more natural methods. But all the experts agreed, the committee came to the recommendation, the herbicide was the way to go. The committee recommended pairing with the city of Douglas in hiring aquatic doctors. We share stewardship of the same body of water. Aquatic doctors has offered both cities a 5% discount, and that is because they, there, there's a savings for them when they do a larger body of the same water. We'd save money by only having one permit. They'd only have to come out once. The city of Douglas had a very positive response from their first year's application of herbicide, and we expect to have the same response. The contract that you have before you, it, it's a little bit confusing because it's kind of a one-size-fits-all. At this point in time, the aquatic doctors has not applied for a per. At this point in time, the aquatic doctors has not applied for a permit. Depending on the results of the permitting, any one of these treatments could possibly be chosen. They expect the. I tricloper. Be the herbicide that the eagle will permit to be used in Kalamazoo Lake. That's the same thing they used in Douglas last year. Tricoplar, I'm probably murdering that name, is five hundred and sixty an acre. Our our two islands out in the harbor are estimated to be no larger than twenty acres. Based on that. One treatment will be a little over ten thousand, treating for the summer will be no more than twenty one thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. The committee also recommended that the city pay the first year cost to treat the two dense islands. We also recommend that the shore owners who have private use of the shore. Be offered the opportunity to join with the city underneath the city's permit and at the city's price. To do their shoreline, I I discussed this with the attorney, he. Said it is permissible for the city to administer the entirety of the project for both the city. And the private shore owners and that is because of the greater benefit for the community. Aquatic doctors will assist city staff in doing. Calculating the fees for each individual homeowner should they decide to. To take advantage of that program and and work with the city on that. The total cost approximately twenty one thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars. The treatments, one will be in the spring, one in the summer. The summer one will be in next fiscal year and will be part of your budget process. The spring treatment would require a budget amendment of approximately ten thousand nine hundred. The contract was reviewed by Jeff Sluggett. He did recommend that we be added as an additional insured on aquatic doctors certificate policy. They will, they have agreed to do that and they said it's actually quite common, they do that for many of their customers. The recommendation again is to. Go with aquatic doctors and join with the city of Douglas in treating this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken.
I'd like to move that we approve the contracting with Aquatic Doctors Lake Management Inc. for one year as per attached contract. For the twenty twenty one treatment season.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Dean to. Approve the motion as presented with Aquatic Doctors Lake Management. Are there any questions or comments? Garnet?
Yeah, Karen, I under legal review, I think this is just a typo. It says the city of Zealand, I would assume that probably should be the city of Sagittuck. I thought for sure it's like. First when I read it, I'm like, I don't know what Zealand has to do with this.
Have it, have it, sorry.
All good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Looking at.
Oh, I think she froze.
Yeah.
What's going on and have the opportunity to do.
There you go.
You're good now.
Oh.
You're back.
Did you miss the whole part?
Yeah, start over, please.
Okay, all right, I've already forgotten what I said. So under this scenario, the city would be the agent responsible for notifying the people. How are we going to make sure that all the shore shore owners are gonna hear about this? What different ways do we have of communicating with them?
After you approve this. We have already started on a on the list and we will send them a notice of what's gonna happen and how. The. How how they can join with the city, we won't be able to tell them how much it will cost the first time, the first notice. And that's because at this point, we don't know what the eagle will approve for. The shoreline. It could be as low as one eighty an acre, as high as five seventy five an acre. So until we know what is it going to be permitted? We can't give them a price, but we will start sending them notices so that they know what's going on. And then as soon as we know what the individual cost will be, we will invite them to. Pay that upfront and join with the city.
And and would we then be able to, if you don't get a response, have some kind of checklist to make sure if you don't get a response? We double check with those people to make sure they're aware of it? Yes or no?
We do not have to get permissions to do the island. We had quite a conversation with. Cliff Bloom on that. When when. When a a lake association or something like that does a private lake, they have to get permissions. But a municipality, it's it's their right.
I'm sorry, I I misspoke, I think, what I meant was, we want to make sure that every shore law shore owner. Is aware that they have the ability to get their their area privately sprayed, is there a way that we can do a check? To make sure, can you say like yes or no, respond back yes or no, and then we can check off? Everybody got it? I just wouldn't want somebody to go, oh my gosh, on the day they're spraying, go, oh my gosh, I didn't know I could get this, my neighbor did.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, that's a good idea.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, for Karen, along those lines, were you successful in getting? To identify the condo association? So that we can deal with the officers of the association as opposed to all the owners within a condo complex?
I have not completed that project, but I. I don't have any reason to think I won't be successful.
Yeah, Cindy has her hand up, maybe she has a comment regarding that, Ken.
Yeah, I have all of the condo associations except for two of them. And they're not very big, one of them I think only has four units, so it would be easy to just notify the four individuals. And the other one. Since Karen's doing such a great job locating that information, I will just let her continue.
I say that because in our case, we have fifty four owners and I wouldn't expect each of the fifty four.
Okay, along the. Lines of who is who the city is going to reach out to. I think we need to keep in mind that we have. Shoreline property owners on both sides of the lake and the Kalamazoo River. We did have some. A letter from a property owner off of Park Street. I I think Ken remembers that letter that came in of someone who expressed a problem now. I don't know if the problem was with the the duckweed or the problem was with the milfoil or with both. We also have it going down, you know, in certain pockets, probably down down river. On the way to Lake Michigan, did you have any discussions about these other properties, Ken or or Scott? In your meeting?
Maybe Scott can add too, but we did not specifically discuss the properties outside of the would be the North Shore. Of Cal Lake itself. But I don't see any reason why owners in any part of the waterway could not buy into the same project as long as it were permitted by Eagle. I I just got on it.
Yeah, no, Ken's right, you know, our focus was on those two very large pockets. Kind of the other side of the bridge from, you know, the Red Dock area, that little bay area kind of near Coughlin Park, that's the real problem, it's the shallow area. The milfoil likes to grow in 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 shallower water. We we can't treat for duckweed, it's it's not an invasive species, but if if individuals in other parts of the lake do have a milfoil problem. I'm sure Karen and the rest of city staff would love to hear from them and find a way to get them integrated into the project if it's all if it's at all possible.
Hello, can any of you hear me?
Yes, Chris, we're going to have an opportunity for the public to address the council in a few minutes.
Okay.
So after we deliberate and make a a motion on this, you'll be you'll be up pretty, have an opportunity fairly quick.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, you bet. Just I just wanted to bring that up and just. Not to reach out to her, whatever process we put in place that there may be some other people. A lot of those places don't have the shallow water. Issue or, you know, they have a lot more current up there, there, you know, where their docks are located, so it might not be. Be an issue, but I just think we have to be aware of it.
Just one.
Any other comments?
Yeah, one final one for me, Mayor. Just for any member of the council or any members of the public that are interested. You know, the seven member advisory committee, you know, we met four times, we had the seven member panel. We've got a lot of meeting minutes, we've got a five page report. And four hours of deliberation on YouTube of of what the committee did, so if anybody has more questions or is. Would like to dig a little bit more deeply into our deliberations, it's all there on the city website, so. I would commend that to anyone that's that would like to is is more interested in this project and I think we all recognized. When we came to this solution that this was, you know, the most safe, effective and cost effective way to approach. This invasive species and I think now is a good time to once again say thank you. To the Schaefer family and their trustee for this very generous donation that will. Which will cover a lot of the cost of of doing this treatment. And then finally, you know, long term, we realize that invasive species aren't gonna go away just this year alone, we're gonna have to continue to work. At the boat launches to educate people about not introducing invasive species into our lake. And we're gonna need to continue to work upstream. To educate people about the dangers of excessive fertilizer runoff. Leaking septic systems, these are all things that feed nutrients into the lake that cause the weed problem to be, you know, worse than it needs to be, so there's long term work to do as well, but. The advisory committee thought very long and hard about this and we do believe this is the best, safest, most cost effective solution for for our harbor.
All right, thanks a lot. Aren't there any other comments or questions on this issue? We've had a lot of opportunity the last few months to to discuss this, I want to express the. Councils and communities appreciation to the committee. This was very professionally done and helped cleared up a lot of questions and uncertainties and. It it was it it was really, really, really great effort, so there's no further questions. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. And the motion passes unanimously. Moving on with the agenda this evening, there is no consent agenda. At this part of the meeting, we open the floor to comments by public. Public can address council on any issue they so desire. When recognized, please state your name and your community of residents. And limit your comments to three minutes, so Mr. Parker, I recognize you right off.
Yes, thank you so much, no, I'm the president of the Bridges of Sagittuck. Right across from the SCA, we are a small condominium, we only have eight units, but. The the treatment of the algae is a big deal for us, we've lost two. Two peo- two units left us because of algae. So I'm just so grateful that we're gonna be treating this. And it's gonna be, you know, it I really think it's gonna help Sagittuck so much. So that's all that I wanted to say, thank you so much.
All right, okay, Chris, keep an eye out for your opportunity to get involved.
Yes.
You bet, all right, any other member of the community wish to address council this evening? See anybody out there? Aaron?
I do not.
Okay, all right. We'll then close the public comment portion of the meeting. We've already addressed the Arnold Schaefer request earlier in the meeting. So we'll move on to. The Boarding Commission reports, Sodick Township Fire District, December twenty twenty, end of year. On historical trends report, is this for information only or do we have someone who's going to address council on this, Karen?
I believe it's for information only.
Okay, all right.
Unless the chief has. Come on board.
Don't see anybody there, Aaron. Yeah, the only person I see associated with the fire district is Scott Phelps. Sitting out there. From his condo in Florida.
He's shaking his head like he's.
Yeah, I know, I couldn't pass up Scott Senior there with that great background, so. Thanks for joining the meeting, Scotty. Moving on. Where's the agenda here? I think this about wraps it up, doesn't it? So if there's no further comments regarding boards or commission or committees. Any council person have anything to to share with any of the boards or commissions they're on?
I might jump in, Karen.
Sure, Holly.
We had a the bike trail. Try community non-motorized bike trail meeting on December thirty first and it was a great meeting. We're definitely looking at the trail as an economic issue and we revisited our mission and our charge to work out. Design, engineering and maintenance agreements between the three communities and. This Friday at two o'clock, the Friends of the Blue Blue Star Trail will be presenting. The entire trail, so portions that are yet to be built, including the bridge. So that will include portions in the township. And Holland Street to North Street, elegant to Maple and Bridge, so. Look on the city website for that presentation is actually already there, you can sort of peruse it. And that's Friday at two o'clock, so. Thanks to everyone.
All right, thank you, Holly. Council comments? Go around the horn here, does anybody want to address council this evening or any council member want to have anything further to say, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
I'll I'll just lump them all together, boards and commissions and council comments, we had a historic district commission meeting Thursday evening was a short, sweet and to the point. We just approved the adding of an egress window at sixty Grevis Street. And approved the removal of a deck and reshingling of the house at eight twenty Holland, short, sweet and to the point. And the recycling committee meets Wednesday afternoon at two o'clock. That'll be available for anybody to participate and listen in on on Zoom and that information is posted at the city webpage.
Okay, thank you, Garnet. Lauren, have anything this evening?
Um, no, just looking forward to the football game.
Ken?
Nothing here, Mayor.
Okay, all right, Scott?
No, Mayor.
Good. Holly? All right, Chris?
No, Mayor.
All right, all right, the only thing I want to share is I was remiss on my mayor comments, not giving a shout out to the Chipos of Central Michigan. They're the first one to gave Butch Jones the opportunity as a a head coach, so. I know we got some chips on the council and out in the out in the viewing audience, so if nothing more to share this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay, motion by Truster, seconded by Peterson. Please call the roll.
Truster?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton? Lewis Stanton? Oh, she's there, and Becken.
Uh, yes, okay, thank you, everybody, have a nice evening.
Thank you.